Good afternoon. I'd like to call the policy committee, regular meeting to order. We are here at the next call. And we'd like to welcome anyone who is out in Zoom land. And I'd like to welcome all of you here today. We do have a forum. We have four of our five members. So we need that we slam it. I don't think we have any ad hoc subcommittee reports. Is that true?
Not.
Do we? Do we have an ad hoc subcommittee?
We don't. Yeah. Okay, Chairman's report. So Merry Christmas and hope you all had wonderful holiday season and you're gonna have a great time on New Year's Eve. Up the court. So. I'm so glad that you didn't make it. I know this this. Twenty eight is kind of.
Sawing lumber by ten thirty.
That's that's me too.
We'll watch come in in New York.
Yes. I'd also like to welcome. Ms. Dodson and. No, I can't call you Matthew.
Our illustrious GM.
Mr. McConaughey, our illustrious GM. And. But Ms. Dodson's. Title is always slips my mind. So it's like you you should have like. Like. Initials or something and call you that. The Chairman's report, I was, I always want to remind you all to please read. The General Manager's letters until you all have done that. So you know what's going on. Do you have any questions about any of the things that have been?
I have to say, when I read the description of the new Fire Chief, it was. The guy really has. Yeah, he's he's done his shtick. So yeah, yeah, you know, I think he comes to us with a lot of great experience. You know, it's it's clear that he's the person who. Really wants to achieve. And and wants to establish. His excellence here. So I'm I'm.
I'm really excited as well.
Yeah.
Chief Burkey's been in the area. You know, serving the community one way or another, whether it's on the healthcare district side or the fire department side since two thousand eight. Yeah, the county, you know, since two thousand and four, serving serving the community. The county, San Francisco. And so he cares about Cambria. He loves the area and loves its fire department. And he's really selfless, you know, and he's humble. And he's really honored to to have the position and looking forward to serving the community and through his life, the community and the fire department. So I think it's a great bit.
That's a good step for him. Great step for him.
Yeah, you read the press release.
I did. Yeah. Well, I read the press release now. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about? The. Any of what is in Mr. McConaughey's letters? Nope. Okay.
What we'll probably bring up at the NCAUC, the Lantern Park staircase. That's that's really been bothering people over there quite a bit. And I don't blame them. You know, because really the only thing that's missing is the landing. So it'd be, you know, it'd be lovely to get that in for everybody. And I can tell you honestly that from the TMMC. Standpoint, I've I've picked a band that's out there before. And we can't get them up now. There's no way we could get them up until until that ladder is fixed. So, you know, God help us. And the, you know, the elephant still puffing season is upon us. And so that's that's a concern, you know, we just, we hate walking up to circumstances where we just can't do it. You know, and we know and we know we've got to pick up. That's really, that's brutal.
It's probably okay, but it was not repaired prior to this weekend with the high tide.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not certain that that's a.
It's not a matter of.
Something that can be permanently repaired, given the.
Oh, well, no.
Yeah, future. Rise or sign change and all that sorts of stuff there.
Yeah.
Nor nor is Highway one. Now we're gonna be a road that isn't under repair. I mean.
So at the first board meeting in December. President Dean was. Was stepped down as president. And Director Gray now is President Gray. And I am Vice President Scott.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were kind enough to offer me that and I'm learning a lot already.
So I'll have to ask Karen if she got her tickets to Disneyland.
She does. You know, a lot of people wanted her to stay on and she's been, she, you know, she was just a great president and I really learned so much from her and I continue to learn so much. Okay, committee member communications. Anything he, any of you would like to speak about? Some of the things you're doing in the community? Just weathering through the holiday season.
Well, again, we we talked about the Corral concerts. I think that. I think that there still are issues that need to be resolved with this Christmas market situation. And and we'll be discussing those at the NCAUC coming up. I'm quite sure. You know, I think also. Just just in general. I with with the situation with water situation, I mean, I'm looking around my own area. And I'm seeing a lot of areas that that are gonna road road. Repair areas that are gonna need to take place. You know, really all over the place.
Hi there.
I also have seen. A number of areas on roadways where you can tell that underneath the roadway. We have sewer leaks. Oh, yeah. I mean, you know, if the if the roadway above the sewer line is cracking up. You can almost rest assured that there's.
Have you reported those?
I the the county knows about them and did do some repairs on the street, at least. In our area, they were running around. I got them to to do, you know, a couple of those. Areas, but yeah. You know, weeks. What are you gonna do?
Okay.
I guess I I would I would add something here. And that's that I. Did my roof a couple of months ago and put rain gutters on, which I hadn't had before. And added a couple of. Big holding tanks, about three hundred gallon holding tanks. For irrigation water and actually water to top off the jacuzzi that's leaking a little bit. First first world problems, you know. And. I was shocked and amazed at the amount of water that I collected off my roof. Just with the two, the two rains we've had. They're pretty good rains, but. I mean, my storage tanks are full. And it's hasn't even really started to be the rainy season yet. So in terms of things that that. CCSD might think about doing in the future to. Ameliate some of the. Water shortages in the future. Some sort of a. Subsidized process to support people collecting water off their roofs and storing it for irrigation purposes outside irrigation purposes. This might be something. That that could save. I mean, I noticed that the water usage in town goes way up in August and September, towards the end of the dry season. When there hasn't been any rain, it's people watering your plants.
And they love, plants love rainwater.
Yeah, that makes some to think about in terms of. Reducing demands on our on our potable water system.
Wonderful idea. Thank you.
You can also collect water from. Fog. That's true. It will drip off here. It's surprising how much water you get from fog.
Any other committee member communications? Okay. Let's go to public comment. I would like to invite you to do any public comment. General Manager, Manager McConaughey.
Let's see, what do I have that hasn't necessarily been blasted out in the letter? Our ad hoc committee, ad hoc committee for the WRF project description will be meeting next week. That project description is now complete from our consultant. With staff input and we are going to bring that to the ad hoc committee consisting of now President Gray and Director Dean. And we'll be reviewing that with legal counsel and getting ready potentially to bring that before the board. Obviously, we've now made our. Who was interim Fire Chief, our our permanent Fire Chief, which is excellent for us. We also have our new Fire Captain that is taking the place of. Newly hired Chief Burkey. That is Mr. Craig Brooks and he'll be coming on in January.
Was he part of the? Fire Department?
He was a reserve. He is actually a full-time firefighter for Tasked at our state hospital. So he's making a lateral move, but he started. A portion of his fire career with with us as a reserve firefighter.
He'll sit right and dealing with members of the community.
Resume is well suited. But he's an excellent, excellent firefighter and captain and good person. What else am I missing? You know, exciting? I think outside of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Will will there be an opportunity for public comment on the revised project description prior to its? Consideration by the board?
There's a period for open public comment, you know, at the board or do you talk about a special?
Well, back in. Either April or July. The last, the last go around, the proposal that that President Dean put out would be that there would be a draft. A revised draft. Project description that there, then there would be a public meeting to discuss that and then it would be considered by the board. Which sounded like a little more robust opportunity for the public to comment rather than. Just public comment at a board meeting. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not.
I can definitely.
May I just suggest that that would be something that could be accomplished at the RNI meeting? Just have it presented there and then the public. It's, I don't know how else you could do it.
Well, the the board can hold a.
A special.
A meeting to discuss the project description. It doesn't need to go to a committee. I mean, I mean, it might go to a committee too, but that doesn't seem like a.
Would the format be the same in a special meeting as it would in a board meeting in terms of the public commentary? Three minutes, you know, even in a in a special board meeting, the still. Very limited.
Yeah.
Where to figure out, you know, probably the best. Way to chew on it or digest it early would be RNI.
That's my suggestion, Jim, because the 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 rules are not, it's really up to the chairman, of course, but I have been hope. Chairman Dean is very, very friendly to public comment and we're definitely encouraged. And also, I think. In the view, in past, when we've offered public meetings, they aren't always that well attended. The best attendance I ever had at the RNI meeting was precisely for that. Forty people in us.
This is our third. Third go round for a for a project.
At least.
Facility that's gonna be celebrating its tenth birthday.
Yeah.
This year.
It'd be a great birthday.
Nice to, nice to get it right.
Yeah. That'd be great. Yes. Do we have any public comment from those who are attending?
No. Okay. I I just have one little. Sure thing. I just want to show you this nice little card that we received from the Shemesh people that mess around. One of the fellows that is was there, he's one of the eldest elder sent it to us and just a thank you for supporting us. If you happen to write letters to support the the Shemesh. Marine Sanctuary, I just thought, you know, in between things you might want to take a look. It's just really a beautiful, nice card.
Nice, nice card.
Yeah, information's interesting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. You know, nobody has COVID here, do they?
Nobody is attending. Nobody is attending other than the people who are here. So we don't have any other public comment. As long as we're all finished here. Public comment. Okay, great. All right, let's go then to the consent agenda. And I'm sure all of you have. Read the November thirtieth, twenty twenty three regular meeting minutes. Thank you so much, Secretary Powell. Do you, are there any questions, edits? Do you want me to give you a few moments to take a look at them again?
Yes.
Yeah, one. Thought you're on regular business, I can forward. A. Had a comment about sending out. Yourself. Top C. But I thought that was under B.
No, I'm talking about three A, which is just the.
I'm about the agenda. The last time.
The purchasing policy.
Ask about any questions on.
Well, I didn't, but you can you can ask any questions that you want. Yeah, no, we're on the consent agenda, which is Agenda Item three A. And these are the regular meeting minutes from November thirtieth.
So what was the?
So what was the question?
That was what I was trying to explain.
Oh, well, go ahead and say.
Four A.
Yes.
Had comments in here. That we had to know consensus was going to send comments. To the Scots and yourself.
Yes.
I thought that was under B. Wasn't one of these comments. That's why I thought we turned him. It wasn't those.
Either one would be. Yeah.
I don't remember the question. No.
So did you look at the? It was on A.
Yeah, I turned in comments on the was on the purchasing.
That's why I said I just wanted to.
I see.
That's fine.
Anything else on the minutes? Do you want to have a motion? You'll prove for minutes.
Absolutely. The minutes. Second.
Also paper? Okay, good. Thank you so much again.
So what was, what was the conclusion of what he said? It's in the right spot or it isn't?
It is in the right.
Okay, under four A.
Based on the video.
Oh, yes.
Okay, let's go then to regular business. This is for a discussion and consideration of policy ten forty point two, response to correspondence to the board. And if you have mine, that's what.
Red line or not red line.
Yeah, this was. I have to let you know that the board was very pleased with the changes that we made. They. They did make a couple of more recommendations and I have. Included those in this red light version. So they are in blue.
Right. There was one. Question.
Yes.
They had, which was about the timeline. For responding within forty eight hours.
Yes.
Being. They bought maybe a little tight. I don't know. I guess I would ask this group. You know, typically when you. Are communicating, you know, via. Internet or with another entity. Forty eight. To seventy two is at kind of a normal range?
Well, it's different than forty eight hours. It's within two business days.
Two business days.
Which gives a little leeway. But they did have some concerns about that. And it was, what if I'm incapacitated? What if I am on a vacation and I don't and I don't get my email? And so that's why we added by the individual. That. That this relates only to emails that are received through the director's CCSD email. With that, they can give one of those, you know, I'm not available kind of a thing.
Right.
And that is a response.
Yes.
So I think I think we met the requirements of what their concerns were.
So you want to, so the the two day window is basically.
It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, what I have here in front of you. Is based on what they told me that they were concerned about and I changed those things. But it's here for any other.
I don't have a problem.
Okay.
Are you getting warm?
I was, I was very invested. I don't know how many of you, I think. Were you were there?
No, I don't watch it.
No. For the board meeting? Yeah, and the and. I really stood my ground. I did. Because I think that the two, that the two working days is is really.
Comments as the individual initially receives respondents. He's not there, but you have acknowledgement of his energy being called.
Yes.
That's not what that sort of sounds.
Well, they also wanted to add barring any unforeseen circumstance whereby the director is unable to respond. So. If they didn't put that response. And they're dying in the hospital. And what I underscored. I put in the blue. And that was what they both.
It matches what I heard.
Oh, clearly.
I would also ask people to make the excuse if they don't do it. Oh gee, I was incapacitated. Oh gee, I, you know. This irony.
You know. I think it's about trust too. And and you know, in the end, there is no. Punishment if you don't respond. But what happens is then the perception out there is that the board is, that the board's not responding. So when that happens, then we can address that with that board member.
That goes to.
Yeah.
You're lacking part of the involvement, which you don't know when it really got applied. Other than you got your email question.
That's true.
And that's usually not. You don't get an answer.
Well, it may be that. You have met, you have. No.
No, you don't.
No. I I. I think that there are. At right now, there are no board members or staff who do that. If in the future we do have those. Kind of situations, then the board president is the one who who will respond to that.
I I have to say honestly, I've been dealing with another CSD recently.
Yeah.
They could do for something like this.
Yeah. Under ten forty, two point, three point two. The blue is that I added was the director may acknowledge the receipt of the correspondence and will forward the correspondence to the board president for his or for his or her designate, designate to respond. If it refers to an issue that is pending. Did you say three point two or two point two?
Two.
Two point three point two. Two point two point.
Ten three two.
Ten.
Three two.
Two.
Ten three two.
Thank you. Yes.
I had a a comment on two point three point one. And that is the line where it says. Bearing in mind that it is imperative for all board members to support. Final decisions made by the board as a whole. And to refrain from undermining the authority of the board after decisions are made. I think the second part of that, the refrain from undermining the authority after decisions are made is fine. I don't. Think it's fine. To say that it is imperative for all board members to support final decisions made by the board as a whole. I would propose that. I mean, because that basically would require. Dissenting board members in any decision to change their position. Once the board has has made a a decision.
Right.
I don't think.
Yeah, that that's not the intent of this, but.
I I.
Do you have a better word?
I do. And that would be acknowledge. It is imperative for all board members to acknowledge final decisions made by the board and to refrain from undermining the authority of the board after decisions are made. I think that's a better. That's a better word. It's it's fine to say. You know, I voted no, but the board passed it. So that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, that's what this the intent is.
But that's not what it says.
No. I I like acknowledge. Because this is going back before the.
Wait.
This is what 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 which one are you in?
Ten forty, two point three point one.
So Jim, you're saying that. Instead of saying imperative for all board members to support the final decisions.
Yeah, that you that. It it's not, it's not fair to the individual board members to. Require that they that they may change their position on any given issue. Once the board has decided. I mean, if the board votes three to two on something and you're in the two. That doesn't mean you have to change your position and support the position of the three that voted in favor of something. But you do need, but but. The the governing body has made a decision and you need to acknowledge that that decision has been made.
Acknowledge and or the term respect, respect for decision.
That that's good too. Yeah, that's fine.
Well, it didn't. So then this sentence comes into play here. So this policy allows board members to give general information to the public as long as they indicate in the correspondence that they are speaking only as individual. Not for the board as a whole now.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I mean.
I think your point that. That. Support may not. Communicate the intent.
Yeah, I I think I like, I like, I like the 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 general manager's addition of respect, right? Acknowledge and respect the final decision made by the board. I mean, it's a. Deliverative body and sometimes you win and sometimes you don't.
Let me repeat that back, make sure.
Yeah.
So is imperative for all board members to acknowledge.
Knowledge and respect final decisions made by the board.
Yes, that would be good.
Yeah, and I absolutely agree with the refraining from undermining the authority of the board after to me. That's good.
Right. Yeah, I I think those those are good edits and respect.
Good edits.
Yeah.
To acknowledge and respect. Final decisions made by the board.
And this, and and I'm I'm really more thinking about about. The 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 current board we have is fairly collegial and cooperative, even when they don't agree on everything.
Right.
But that has not been the case.
Right.
In the past.
Right.
And may not always be the case in the future.
Well, and that's why the policy is important.
Right, right, right. So support was, I thought, a little too strong, too strong.
And then ten at ten forty, two point four point one. It says the director will acknowledge receipt of it. Maybe the director should acknowledge and respect. The board just.
Well, this is received in correspondence.
Yeah. Never mind, I'm just joking.
Okay.
So. Anyway, so says it again, acknowledge, the word acknowledge. So.
I see.
Well, ignore, I I think acknowledge at that point, that's just their thing.
Yeah.
Did you want to?
Oh, yeah, come on in. Oh, oh.
This is right.
Oh.
We're right. Yeah, yeah, right is here.
Anything else? Yes.
You say they give general information.
Yes.
Hi, bye.
Subject is general information. That's why I can talk about anything there.
Defining general.
That's what the question.
Well, the general means. Anything other than things that are pending with the board. I mean, if if somebody sends me an email and says, you know, how do you feel about growth? I'm gonna say, well, my opinion. That's not anything that's pending with the board.
Indirectly, it's definitely general.
Yeah, but it's not pending.
No.
Actually formally.
CCSD don't have things. It doesn't. It CCSD doesn't have land use for so it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Right.
You don't.
And you might, and that might be part of my, yeah, my my answer.
Right.
I mean, that this.
That's fine, I just sort of wondered if the.
Yeah.
Gray area.
It is a gray area.
As long as you put like uh, Jim was saying on the initial phase that you're still open minded.
Yes.
This sort of a question.
Well, that's. On part of why we're there is.
And.
To bring our.
As soon as policy has not been enacted yet, so.
No, it has not.
On ten forty, two point two point three. Even there is no note on the CCSD website how to contact the district.
I think there is.
Not including.
Probably not.
That's all I just mentioned.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Cause that would be very important.
Yeah, and as soon as.
And they could complain if you didn't respond to that.
Yeah, and as soon as it's to get approved, which I'm sure.
No, that's fine, there's, right now, it's not there. Pointing out that that may be a reason that some people would trust for it or not, don't respond, but they don't know where to go and what to respond.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's my point.
Absolutely.
It's good to make sure that's in there.
I'm sure, I'm sure Ms. Dodson will be here. Anything else? This is gonna go back to the board. Probably in uh, March. No, probably in February, maybe in February.
So since I've forgiven, since I was out of the room, was there any additional change?
No.
Can you, uh, I don't think we need a motion if we just officially announce consensus.
Um, let's have a motion.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
On ten forty, two point four point one. Things about operational managers.
Right.
Does that relate to any particular operation within the CCSD or? Water, power, weather?
It's.
Is that a generic term that we use?
Do you have a definition for operational matters? Of what you're in charge of, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Different language for operational matters.
I just want to.
Yeah, what.
I mean, you got several things to get over soon.
Well, the board sets policy and then the general manager runs the, I mean, if you got a leaking water pipe, there's some water gushing down the street.
Yeah, that's.
Sewer line. Those are operational.
Yeah, that that that's. Yeah, no, that's all about the general manager.
Right.
It's all like that.
That's the top, I think.
Right, it's a tough one.
How about?
Last few words.
You might, you might wanna put, I mean, if for clarity, you could put, you know, I E, you know. If the subject matter relates to questions or complaints about district matters.
Matters related to the operation of the district.
Yeah.
Literally a tour, so so matters, is that again?
Like that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, matters, what did I just say?
You said complaints about.
Matters.
Questions or complaints.
About.
Operational district matters or district operational?
Matters relating to the operation of the district.
Matters, yes, that's what you said, matters, yeah, that's right, that's what you said. It's just, it does give it a little bit more framing, you know.
To the.
So in other words, it's not philosophical or stuff.
Policy, it's not about anything else, it's about.
Um, the district.
What what's, what's owned by the general manager, staff or is reversed.
So if the subject matter relates to questions or complaints.
Yeah.
About matters related to the operations of the district.
Yeah, that's better. Yeah, that is better.
I like it.
That is better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just gives it a good framing, so that's two for one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anything?
Good catch.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Um, okay, so I'll move that um. That uh, the uh, policy committee forward the draft. Um. Response correspondence to the board. Um, with the uh, changes to, with the proposed changes to ten forty dot two dot two dot three. And ten forty dot two dot four dot one.
And two point three point.
Sorry, two point three point.
Yes.
Two point one, then two point three point two four one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah.
Dr. Scott, I asked you to have this item on the January eighteen.
Oh, yay. I'll, I'll get it to you with the.
I'll send you this, uh, what, is it gonna?
Yeah.
Two years.
If I get it to you by next week.
Yeah.
We're working on this with Dawn. That's longer than ago.
Okay, so uh, let's go then to agenda item victory or B. And this is the review of the finalized CCSD operating principles, and this did get approved.
Yeah.
With the red line uh, additions. So I just wanted y'all to see it, cause you did such good work. Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah, it looks good. And then what was added, there's largely clarifying.
Yeah. And format.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
They wanted bullets.
I would just say the committee expressed pleasure.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
That was great.
It's very readable and the, and I think the format is approachable.
And it's on one page.
And on that stage, yes, absolutely.
All right.
Brevity is next.
You guys did really good work with this. Oh, thank you. Is there any public comment on either four A or four B agenda items?
Do we have no, we don't have anybody in the queue, do we?
No.
She has to ask him.
She can ask just in case somebody.
Yeah. Yeah.
Slack in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Well, let's go ahead and go to then agenda item four C, and this is kind of an interesting way of presenting this to you all. Because the um. Under the discussion, you have seven different policies that we are currently working on. And that's one of the frustrations that I have had in the past with the policy committee and. How we work toward updating policies is that things kind of go by the wayside. And so I did this so that you all know that they are not going by the wayside. That um, there actually is work being done um, by different entities, and so I'm gonna go through um, each of these. Uh, policies and just give you an update, and I would um, also encourage. Ms. Dodson and Mr. McConney um, to jump right in because some of them will be referred to things that you already. Yes.
I I found it interesting in the little memo that we wrote that the first line is the following policies will be discussed at the December twenty eighth policy committing. Meeting and then um, after the um, items are listed. Since there are no attachments to this agenda because the committee will not be discussing the contents of these policies at this meeting. Make up your mind.
Well, they will not be, they will not be discussing the content.
Just.
That's why I should put the word content.
He's trying to keep us on our toes.
Yeah, that was good. You always have.
I thought.
Yes, okay.
Always just to provide some evidence that actually we don't read.
Thing. Okay, so um, legal, the first one, legal counsel and um, auditor policy, I have actually. A red line version that have, I had it in time, I probably could have um, put it on this agenda, but um. Um, I'm not gonna discuss the contents.
No.
But um, we have this um, red light version. No, these are from legal counsel.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is, this is from legal counsel.
Yeah, and that's what, and and that's why it takes so long with these policies is that so many, many people need to weigh in. On what needs to be in these policies.
Three thousand dollars with the red lines there. Yeah, cause the lawyer had to.
No, we have all money. Um, so um, we will put this on our next agenda. And we will um, take a look at the contents of the policy. And um, we'll decide uh, what we like and what we may wanna edit and go from there.
Excellent.
Any questions about that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're gonna look at all of these at the next meeting or or a couple of at the next meeting.
Depends, depends on if I get the stuff back so that I can bring you the policy uh, contents.
Right, but you do have the number one.
Yes, that one will be on the.
We have legal counsel.
Just as a, as a, as a general question here, because these things are being uh. Contemplated and um, the constructions being participated by by staff is. And this would be something probably the general manager and Haley could, you know, can answer, is the staff feeling empowered? By being involved with these decisions and with these, with these projects, I mean, like, cause sometimes you would say, oh. You know, uh, you know, do you, I mean, are you, are you finding that the staff is generally um. Invigorated by being able to have discussion on these matters?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Our organization is is changed a bit in terms of, I would say, uh, downsizing. But in theory, we have thinned out a few of our positions in the organization and taken a lot more responsibilities. And so with that, um, they're having to take on more projects, but we're moving forward. Um, and they're, I I believe that our staff feels not only empowered, but they're starting to see. Slow and incremental changes within the organization and and we're accomplishing things.
Mm hmm.
Um, yeah, and I, I'm not here to toot our our horns, so to speak.
Yeah, no.
Back grand for the skate park, like, just such a win for us that Mrs. Dodson and myself, Cambria worked on. Um, Jim and Tristan working on permitting with that, the NCA meetings, you know, the things that we, you know, the things that we're doing. Um, that they're taking pride in, right, taking pride in the work and seeing us actually accomplish some things that may have been just kind of. Kind of putting along.
Yeah, I I just, you know, I just feel like that's really important for your staff to feel empowered and, and.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Important, I mean.
Yeah, and and we're, and it's the little wins, right, the little incremental wins um, that we're starting to see. You know, I know there's, you know, I'll speak to the WRF and I know it's a um. It's an interesting topic.
Alves from.
And that's a lot of passionate uh, people on both sides and, you know, I can't speak to what happened before, but we're really working hard. On correcting some of those mistakes and moving forward, working with the consultant, and I think, you know, we do bring it before the board and it's newly framed format. You know, that's a small win for us, and I think, um, I think everybody would be pleased, and with that small win. And the little wins that Jim and Tristan have been working with consultants and, I mean, with the county, so we're gonna be with county San Luis Obispo. We're gonna be with the coastal commission, I mean, we're doing these things that just haven't been happening.
Yeah.
And I, those little wins, I feel like are gonna add up to really big wins and and at the end of the day. You know, Jim is the new utilities manager, he's standing on that, and you know, with pride, he can say, you know, this is what we've done.
And own it.
And own it.
Yeah, and that, that's the part that I think is really important. Um. Uh, when, when we get to the next uh, agenda, the next in the list, the purchasing policy. Um, and we'll go there unless somebody else has anything else, we're okay. Um, when I first um, started looking at the purchasing policy, and you know, this has been on how many agendas forever? And um, when I met with Ms. Dodson and um, Ms. Fritz. Um, it was, thank you so much for asking. And I, cause I think when we make decisions about their stuff.
Right, right.
It doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
Well.
So.
You, you, but it makes sense or not, the the point is it's, it's isolation or.
Disrespectful.
It's disrespectful, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a pretty strong word.
Well, you know, there's a lot of things the district has done. Um. I wanna put, it's sometimes can be archaic, you know, sure, so trying to, and what what Ms. Dodson and Ms. Fritz have done. With our electronic payment process, you know, stumbled on that one, trying to really sell that, um, but we eventually got that. Uh, we made it harder than we needed to, but uh, the digitizing of a lot of our documents, I mean, we pay. This is three thousand? Thirteen hundred?
To um, our vendor and seller.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's about seven hundred dollars a month, but it can fluctuate up and down.
Just for storing.
Storing all documents that go back to the base.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Why? Now, the problem is, you know what it takes to truck that stuff back here to destroy?
Oh my god.
It's about thirty six thousand dollars.
It's easy.
So we'll have to rent a U-Haul.
Yeah, so we're gonna go ready U-Haul and pull it out of storage and bring it back here to destroy.
All kinds of boxes.
But they charge you like a thousand dollars a box?
It it's ridiculous.
So I mean, there's things like that, like the um, input from these committees, uh, guide. You know, purchasing policy, things like that, and then we also wanna be able to come to you and say, okay, you know, we appreciate that policy, but this is what we're dealing with. On the back end, it's been there for decades, you know, so it's cleanup processes on our end, our end and seeing.
Yeah.
You know, policies come from your end and being able to have input on that and then kind of give you a glimpse to what is in the operational side. And sometimes there's a mess there that's been there for years and you kind of continue those.
Could we have like a community bonfire? Fourth of July or something.
Might work.
Well, um, I I did this at my previous position, I I digitized everything. It is a real headache, but once you're done.
Oh, yeah.
And I hated it that every time we needed a box, they were gonna charge us, I think it was sixty or seventy dollars, just to go. Here, you know.
They charged us like forty dollars in one way.
Yeah.
To Iron, Iron Mountain or?
Iron Mountain, it was an iron mountain.
Yeah, I did a lot of work.
Got a mountain full of money.
Yeah, so um, good, good.
And you always get the wrong box.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Instead of doing it two or three times to get the. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So um, the second one is the purchasing policy and and I've already gone over kind of the history of of the purchasing policy and. And um, committee member Hal's input and he did put together a needs assessment. You all, I think you've seen that.
Yeah.
Um, I took that needs assessment to, at the time, President Dean, and she goes, I know we needed. We don't, we don't need help with this, so um. This policy is going through um. The general manager and Ms. Ms. Fritz and Ms. Dodson, and they are still reviewing it. And then probably it'll be reviewed by uh, general counsel.
Yeah, we're actually revamping the entire policy.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so we're meeting weekly on it and we don't have it on.
Okay, great.
Cool.
Right.
That's very.
So the next one is the whistleblowing policy, and the policy that we do have right now is the CSDA policy.
Totally.
Um, Mr. Carmel says that there is no problem adding volunteers to the current policy. So that would include then committee members, cause that was one of the things that we discussed at our last meeting. Um, MRG, what, show me what MRG is.
Uh, units of full resources group.
Okay, is um, reviewing all of the personal personnel policies. And after their updates, we um, will take, take a look at the purchasing policy and after. You all do your work and we'll take a look at that, but it is not ready for us, it's.
Yeah.
Okay. Legislative advocacy, this is um, C four. And um, I did ask the question of um. General counsel, and he said that. Um, cities will often take positions in favor or opposed to legislation that impacts them. And communicate those positions to their selected state representatives, sometimes having been asked to do so by the League, League of Cities. We've seen the same types of requests from CSDA, although it would depend on the issue. I don't generally see anything wrong with the board taking positions on legislation that could impact the district, which means. We should go forward with putting together an advocacy policy. Okay? And we can do. And we can do it based on some of what's in the C S D A policy, but um. We're not there. So that will be on a future agenda.
What uh what number is that? It said two thousand, oh.
It is. Yeah, it is uh one zero five five.
Two, one, what?
It's policy number one zero five five.
Oh. It's still in the one thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll take a look at that in the future. Okay. Then the next one is the role of the G M. And um I asked the question about whether or not we have a role in doing that and the answer is yes. And so what um I received from general counsel is a document. That. Looks like this. It's Los Osos Community Services District approved management objectives for the general manager. No, it is five pages.
Matt's working on the one from San Simeon.
So this is a really beautiful document. And it's got some really good stuff in it. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you that. And cuz we're gonna need your input about how we might go forward with um augmenting. Um what the code says about the general manager.
Did we get a note saying that 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 was not under our peer review because it was by statute?
It's by code.
Right.
Um. No, that was something that we thought was the case. Um but then I asked general counsel directly and he said, there's nothing wrong with you. Um expanding on direction for that. So that will be on an agenda in the future.
Cool.
So can you electronically send that to us?
Um when when I get to a point where um it's gonna be on the agenda. I will send it to you. You probably can get it on the. Yeah, so anyway, I was kind of excited about that, but we definitely want to have you involved. Hey. The next one is C six and this is the climate change policy and um. I did receive a response from um then President Dean. She's the chair of the I N R committee and she said. That they are reconstituting their climate change ad hoc task force. I don't know if it's any ad hoc or task force, but anyway, they're reconstituting it because. In order for the district to apply for and receive grants. They actually have to have that kind of a group and a a very formal client.
Policy, yeah.
Yeah. So um that won't be something that we'll be looking at right away, but um. Um I I think that's a a really good direction to go at this point.
And it's appropriate for the R N I committee to to do this, yeah.
Do you have any thoughts on that? On um climate change um policy or plan? I mean, what are we doing already in that arena?
Fundamentally, in terms of the type of programs within the district. We don't really have anything. Uh we're in a sticky situation and I talked to Director. About the process of moving the E V vehicles and things of of that nature and I'm working with Jim and the um. P G for some of their programs and incentives they have. We're in a, we're in a funky period and as far as our vehicles goes because we've replaced some of them recently and so. It's not economically feasible to then move away from them. We have to. Have a place where we have the E V charters, but that's on our radar. We have theoretically until twenty twenty five, I believe. Um this will be like the last year, the new vehicles within the government organization have to be E V.
There you go. How many?
Twenty twenty five. So how many in twenty twenty five?
All, all new purchase. We don't know if that's actually gonna be feasible.
Yeah, right.
Most agencies to make it happen that quickly and the production and.
Yeah.
Uh like a Ford Lightning truck is able to do what we need it to do here.
Right. It it there there's 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 limitations to what those trucks can do.
Right.
I think I think what, you know, the the important thing is you're not gonna do this overnight by twenty twenty five. It's gonna, it's gonna have to be phased in, but you know, if you have, you know, smaller vehicles uh that consume less. Uh you know, I mean, you know, gas is is still terribly expensive and um you know, if you have hybrid cars that can. You know, can uh do some of the visiting that you don't need a a full fledged truck to do. You know, the question is, do you need trucks to do everything? Well, you know, I my my question is, you know. Maybe you do, maybe you don't. I don't know. I I yeah, I don't have a window on that, but. You know, there there's there's certainly opportunities to begin to fix it. One of the things, for example, that I that I argued. At the um uh the Wind Farm panel, um I was fortunately the last person that was able to speak at the panel. Um uh is that, you know. You know, instead of doing this ridiculous wind thing out here. Start to install large areas like they did in the Curaiso Plain uh with uh with with solar panels. It's a technology that we don't have to wait five years to figure out whether it's gonna work. It's a technology that as you build it, it gives you energy. Um you know, my suggestion was to cover the entire aqueduct system of California with 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 solar panels. To prevent evaporation, to increase the efficiency of the panels and to support for solar and. Crazy as it may seem. A week later, as I was sitting in Portugal, uh my wife's uh former handbill director's significant other. Was the guy that did all the permitting for the Curaiso Plain. So um you know, I think I think that there's things that we can do incrementally.
You know, we have to know that we're doing.
Yeah.
We're making those steps. We met with a couple of different vendors. We went out into the wellfields. Um our idea is potentially putting solar out in those wellfields.
Right, exactly.
Um we're gonna do battery backups at the wastewater plant.
Yeah.
Because the footprint for the solar is large enough for the R O I.
Right.
So. Just the amount of sun and energy needed.
Right.
For sold strictly at the footprint of the wastewater plant isn't large enough to really.
Yeah.
Give us what we need. So some solar there with battery backups.
That's what I'm saying. Incre- incrementally, you can start to, you can start to do things that will save you money or save us money. You know, as we go and we don't need to to determine whether it will work or not.
And some of that, as far as climate goes, I went on a ride with uh Mr. Stephen Meeks, our water superintendent yesterday. For meter reading. Manual meter.
Yeah, just replacing the meters is gonna make a significant difference cuz you're not gonna be driving all over town.
Certainly.
Absolutely, absolutely. That those gentlemen go through every two months more, eleven to twelve days.
Yeah.
Of driving ten feet at a time.
Right.
Hoping that the nineteen ninety eight top book computer that's running Windows X P.
Oh, God.
Picks up the signal. Uh if it doesn't pick up the signal, they look at the address, they get out of the truck. To walk, so manually read the meter, come back in and then fight with the computer. Whose touchscreen doesn't work, whose mouse doesn't work very well and they do that to read two thousand meters.
Oh, that's just.
So we're again gonna go point the board with some potential financing options.
Yeah.
For getting these meters.
Yeah, make a huge difference.
And replaced. And there's thousands of dollars in labor and personnel power that's just being. Um wasted. Hundreds of dollars, I was.
Oh.
They could be put in other areas in the district.
Sure.
On, you know, infrastructure, aging infrastructure and things like that, so.
Absolutely.
We're chipping away at it. We probably should come up with some type of a vision for that, some type of strategic vision.
Yeah.
Um you know, when we get to the strategic planning process, that probably should be on there. And I know uh uh.
Chipper Scott and I have discussed, you know, the re-roofing of this building and adding solar panels to, I mean, that's just a no brainer. It's just a no brainer.
Absolutely.
And we have plenty of sun cuz I haven't paid one penny for electricity this year.
Oh, no, I haven't either. I'm I'm on my second house with with solar. I I just.
Okay, so um so that's being taken care of.
Yeah, okay, good, good.
Number seven is um the social media policy and this is under the same review by M R G. Um this is, this is a personnel policy, um and I'm sure that um we can add. Volunteers to those board members and volunteers that'll be. It should just say everybody involved with the district. But we'll be involved with that. And then once that gets reviewed and. Gets looked at by um executive staff and legal counsel, um then I will bring it here so that you can take a look at what's there. Okay.
Great.
Okay. Okay, so um that's what I intended for us to do under this agenda item. Is there any um? Is there any public comment? And um and do you all have any questions about any of what I just said? No, okay. All right.
Say thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I mean, one's comment on the on replacing the the meter system, I'm sure I'm not the only person that has to go out and dig out his meter.
Yeah.
Every every month or so because the gophers. I mean, the 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 meter box starts going crazy. And I don't know if it's just a tiny bit of moisture or anything. I don't have any leaks or anything, but it seems to be a really favorite spot of the gophers. And I actually have to take the thing apart and carefully, very carefully, so I don't bust anything, dig out the meter so you can actually. Read it, assuming mine is one you have to read by hand.
Yeah.
And there's probably hundreds of those, so they're grabbing a little hand trowel with them when they're out there.
I saw I saw quite a few of them. There's some nice succulents.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah.
They're they're in the meter box, there's dirt coming up through the meter box and. That alone took three minutes, right? Those three minutes add up times two thousand.
Oh, sure.
You know.
And and when they're talking about an electronic payment thing, is that some way where we'll be able to pay our water bill like online without having to pay that? Where's that five dollar fee or whatever it is?
You already have that if you do uh A C H.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But we did have the ability to pay for uh with credit card.
Okay.
Um well, there's a little bit of a surcharge there, but okay. What would be nice is that on the website, eventually you may be able to see live usage. So they'll be able to see where you are usage wise at any given moment, not waiting until the end of the end of your cycle. Yeah, exactly.
Well, I've got a flume uh on mine and I'm telling you, I'm I really like it. I really like it and every month I get a I get a report. From it.
Maybe that's what I should have had. I got a five hundred, well, I got a three hundred dollar water bill with the combine.
Yeah.
Water bill and I had a toilet there that on occasion would leak. So I had, so I shut it off.
Yeah.
For two months and I got the next bill was five hundred dollars.
Oops.
I shut up the problem. Okay, so then I called in the plumber, the plumber didn't fix the fix the toilets, like you start using it again. And um I asked C C D, they C sixty, they came out like within a couple of days and they said, oh, you've only used one unit. I says, oh no. Excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh because I see you can see my past bills, I only use between two and three units every two months. All of a sudden, I'm using fifteen.
Yeah.
And and I don't think a leaky toilet could do that much more. That's thousands and thousands and thousands of gallons. But it was only on occasion. It wasn't like it was running all night. I mean, I was home. I I wasn't away or like that. So I says, what can be done about this? I mean, it's obviously there's a problem. I said, well, we need to replace the meters. And I said, well, maybe there's a problem with the meter, but they did not check the meter and she says, well, you can make make it into payments. I already have A C H. So I don't get to do two payments. I had to pay five hundred dollars, you know, so um hopefully this time around of.
It'll be much better.
It'll be better, but I it's just hard to believe that an occasional leaky toilet, it wasn't all the time. Occasional leaky toilet would use thousands. I mean, that's hundred fifty times twelve, something like that, whatever that is, it's thousands and thousands.
That a flume unit would have saved you a lot.
Yeah, and then and like Ms. Dodson said, you know, you um with this new system, you're gonna be able to go on whenever you want to. And see what's happening.
Well, I mean, I can go out and look at the little blue flower and see it spinning around, but I never thought to do that. I turned off the problem.
Well, that's a B G, just go on the web.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have that portal up and running um hopefully by March or April.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, we're moving through the steps with Tyler right now. Um so we hope to have that running in spring.
I'm keeping my.
I got two flumes and could never get either of them to work. I had the flume guys out to the house and they could not figure out how to get it to work. I don't know what the what the what the problem was.
That was my experience.
But they could never get it to work. They gave me my money back both times, cheerful, but. I could never get it to work. So I tried.
Was your.
Right, so um.
Do you share agenda items?
Future agenda. What what I have is legal counsel and auditor puzzle policy, legislative advocacy policy. Role of the general manager policy perhaps depends on what I did from you. And. I don't I don't think I have anything else. So from you.
Yeah, well, I I'd like to see us get the climate the climate uh policy if we can talk to the. Uh the infrastructure people and see if they could kind of move ahead with that so we can let them know we're anxious to do that. Um so they gotta get ad hoc committee together, like they do that sooner than later.
There. I don't know when it will be available. I will talk with. Director, yeah, Director.
Just ask, you know, if there's any kind of.
Let us let them know we're excited about looking at that.
There's just nothing to prevent you from going to one of their meetings.
That's true. Good point. Yeah. What a smart thing to say.
I I do get that on my in my email.
But it but it but it still is, it it's not a bad thing for some kind of. To actually.
Anything else?
I'm glad because I'm the one that started that whole bucket.
Yes, you do.
All right, so I think we're ready to adjourn.
This is great.
Is there anybody?
It's holiday. There's, you know, people, people are not coming.